Okay, so everybody.
Well, you're in.
I, you know.
My role time.
Hey, somebody did.
Somebody's here.
There's somebody.
Um.
Yeah, Michelle's.
Zoom too. Please says recordings, Zoom didn't pick it up, the owl didn't pick it up.
Oh wow.
What does it say?
Zoom is not working.
Oh.
The recording, there we go.
Let me see if I can do it.
Debbie, that wasn't your phone notification, was it?
That was my phone.
Oh, it was? Okay, I thought it was the hour over here.
It sounds the same, I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, it asked me if I want to save it to the computer, but normally it notifies you when it's being recorded.
Uh, it says on top, this meeting is being recorded.
No, that's auto AI, okay.
I just sent a request to record to the, oh, thank you. So at least this way we're sure we have it.
Yeah, I don't know how it's gonna work, if it's separate to go on.
We'll find that.
Okay.
But we have pants and belt and suspenders, cuz we have both of them.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, you know what's weird though, we didn't hear it say, this message is being recorded.
That's what I mean.
I have my sound, my computer turned down. The owl is working.
Yeah, then it's choosing the correct, um, speakers. Guess we still have, we'll see what happens tomorrow when it puts it up.
Yeah, yeah. Well, at the very least, it's recording to this laptop, so it should hear us.
Oh, it is, auto is playing, you know, everybody.
Okay, alright. Everybody ready? Okay, so this is the September eleventh, uh, business meeting of the Middle Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and, um, our meetings are normally the second and fourth Thursday of the month. We didn't plan it, but our meeting happens to fall on September eleventh. So, um, why don't we just have a quick moment of silence? Alright. Um, thank you for the moment of silence and remembrance of Patriot Day. Uh, I'll make a motion for the approval of the agenda, and Mark, do you have any amendments?
No. No, I think so.
The motion?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty eighth.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Pat, could we please have a report on executive sessions?
Sure, the board met very briefly in executive session to discuss, uh, real estate and any legal matters, no decision permitted or books to take them.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items, and that includes anyone on Zoom as well? If anyone's on Zoom, just please unmute yourself, uh, you have a comment to make? Anyone? Yes.
That's the new addition on the signs with the chains and that kind of thing out side here at the intersection. There's a phone post, and then there's a box with a chain wrapped around it.
That's all the, yeah.
Yeah, and on the other side too.
Yeah. I just, I don't know the chains. Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Wow.
Sorry.
There we are.
Um, uh, announcements, just a couple really, uh, quickly. So our twenty twenty four Person of the Year, Betty Ann Ricky, who supports, uh, her cause is the breast ca- is breast cancer, and, um, she is having a breast cancer fundraiser on Sunday, September fourteenth, uh, at the VFW Post. So, um, you can find that over, some flyers over on the side, and, um, they will also have, uh, their traditional walk for breast cancer on October eleventh, that's at Lehman Park. And on October thirteenth, Pink Lights will have a ceremony, uh, excuse me, have a fundraiser at Texas Roadhouse, so it's dined to donate. Um, as far as new businesses, we're excited that, uh, September nineteenth will be the ribbon cutting for Blazing Grill, so everyone's welcome to join us. And that's all I have for announcements, unless you have anything, Mark. Alright, uh, we have committee and department reports, like we do the first meeting of every month that covers every committee and department in the township. Those reports are over on the side table, and they'll be as always included in their entirety with the minutes. So I would make a motion to accept the committee and department reports.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Okay, uh, correspondence, is there any correspondent?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you, that brings us to the public hearing for tonight. There is a public hearing regarding, uh, ordinance amending the Middle Smithfield Township's subdivision and land development ordinance, commonly known as SADO, chapter one seventy of the Code Organizations of Middle Smithfield Township, right? Adding definitions and providing for reimbursement of review fees incurred by fire chiefs as part as their review of subdivision and land development applications. It also reduces the number of paper copies that are required to be submitted for review, but mainly we did this to include the fire chiefs so that they may review building plans. Um, and as usual, I will turn the public hearing portion over to, uh, Pat Armstrong.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Thank you, um, as the night indicated, uh, this has been advertised for a public hearing for consideration of an amendment to the subdivision and land development ordinance of Middle Smithfield Township, so that will open the public hearing, public hearing is open. Uh, and as, uh, the chairwoman indicated, uh, this is an ordinance amending SADO to provide for, uh, review fee or the reimbursement of review fees incurred by fire chiefs as in association with the review of subdivision and land development applications and plans, and also reducing the number of hard copies of plans required to be submitted for review. As the board made the call initially, you had changed the number of, uh, hard copies of the SADO application and plans uh, to one, but as a result of the Township Planning Commission, they requested to still get their paper copy, so that got changed back to six, so the current version, you have six, you're still requiring six, uh, hard copies of the plans for SADO application. Uh, are there any questions or comments, uh, from the board for me at this time?
No.
No.
Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the public?
Just in, just land development, I feel.
Uh, this is an amendment to the subdivision and land development ordinance.
Just land development.
Subdivision and land development.
Okay, I'm only saying that because from an EMS standpoint, especially when there are elevators involved, we tend to look at it as the size of an elevator. Because if you have a cardiac arrest on the second floor, and the stretcher does not fit on an elevator, that becomes an issue because it's really difficult to do CPR on somebody who you have to put into an upright position.
Hmm, no, this is specific to a subdivision and land development.
That's why, that's why I don't, but there's food for thought in the future. We have a problem already with it.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from the public? Seeing none.
None on mine.
Anything else from the board?
Nope.
No.
You can close the public hearing?
We'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Um, any questions, all in favor of, aye.
And now if the board wanted to consider entertaining a motion, uh, to approve the ordinance, which would be ordinance number?
Two fifty.
Two fifty?
Yep.
Both of them.
Second. Comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Okay. And now this brings us to the bid opening and possible award. Um, the township, uh, placed an ad inviting people um, to bid uh, on a two thousand and one freightliner tri-axle truck, meaning to, um, submit, if they had one to sell, to submit to us what, what it would be. Um, and that ran in the Pocono Record. Let's see. Monday, August twenty fifth. And as usual, we posted it everywhere that we were able to post it on our website and all. Um, Michelle, do you have the?
Yeah.
Oh, you have it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
I wouldn't even spend.
I want to make a.
I did. The adder in twice, the ask you on twice, August eighteenth and the twenty fifth.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for identifying that, Michelle. May you go more.
And we received one bid from MDF Excavating Inc. Um, price is seventy five thousand dollars, it's a two thousand and one freightliner, FLD one twenty SP. Truck had a CAT twelve motor with less than two hundred thousand miles on a complete rebuild. Truck has an eight LL transmission with a four one one ratio gears on rubber block suspension, the dump body is a sixteen point six OX steel dump body. The truck is inspected and worked as should. Ben and Pittman received.
Awesome. Um, anything in there about a cloud?
No.
Okay. Alright, well, I'll make a motion to accept uh, the bid receiving, that we receive the bid and, um, have it go under legal review.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll discuss that later. Alright, and now?
Hold on. He's in the detail of the year.
Okay.
This is from Mid Smithfield Township, not Smithfield.
Yeah.
And the description matches up with the, I don't know if I saw the big dots, the description matches up with the big dots?
Well, here's the, here's the ad.
I don't think so, let's. You can, you can, I'll look through while we.
Okay, alright. So, uh, let's moving on to the size of this report. Um, I would make a motion to pay from our general fund bills in the amount of a hundred and eighty one thousand, seven hundred and twenty nine dollars and five cents.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
No.
Aye. For our sewer fund, I make a motion, uh, to pay bills in the amount of a hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and two cents.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, uh, we have our bond payments. Um, and they are totaling, I'll make a motion to pay the bond payments in the total of five hundred and fifty six thousand, six hundred and sixty eight dollars and seventy five cents.
Second.
Any comments or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that brings us to the solicitor's report with the zoning ordinance amendment.
Thank you. So, as you're aware, for a while now, we've been reviewing, uh, the zoning ordinance amendment. We discussed it at the last meeting, we also discussed it at the work session. Uh, it's already been forwarded to the county, and we've gone through the county comment letter, both at the work session and in your last meeting. The one outstanding piece that we didn't resolve at your last meeting was
Oh.
airports and where we're allowed for. Uh, the, I believe it was the Township's Planning Commission that suggested you, if the prior version permitted airports as a conditional use in the RR in the industrial, the Township Planning Commission, I believe, suggested taking it out of the RR. And so at the last meeting, we tentatively took it out of the RR. And my understanding is we were going to kind of look through the, um, other zoning districts to determine whether or not it made sense to allow for airports anywhere else other than the industrial. Um, we talked about, I think, a little bit at the work session. Um, do we have?
Well, we looked at the dimensional standards for the industrial district, and it fit, right?
Yes, one thing I wanted just to correct you, if you go back sometime in its revision, it also was a conditional use and conservation.
Okay.
So, it was RR and conservation, but somehow the conservation part got changed in this version, if you had not be on the website and look, you'll see.
It's programmed by conditional use in the conservation as well?
Just so you know, we're not just talking about RR, it's also C, or commercial conservation.
Hmm.
So.
So everybody knows.
I appreciate that, so I think the last piece of this, before we send it back to the County Planning Commission, back to the Township Planning Commission for review and comment,
Hmm.
will be to determine whether or not you're only gonna allow airports as a conditional use in the industrial, or if you also want to allow them in another district. Um, and I think the districts you were discussing were, um, well, I don't wanna put, uh, I mean, that's.
We, we had thought about C two. So industrial and C two.
I'm happy with just industrial.
Yeah, that's the bus.
They were two pretty large parcels, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
Somebody wants to put an airport in.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know the likelihood of it ever happening. Like.
But we've allowed for it as required by law.
Okay, so, so airports in the scheduled uses will now be only permitted by conditional use in the industrial. And with that, I think that's, I think that was the last remaining item.
The county again.
Yep, is everyone, now, I guess the next que- the next question is?
We'll make a motion to direct you to, to ask the solicitor to please send that off to the county.
Sure.
And we're on our way.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you. We hit this time, we still haven't. We still have four months in either.
Is there anything else left for the, um, solicitors' report? Uh, do you have anything else on the solicitors' report?
No, nothing specific off, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were about.
No, that's alright, that's alright.
Um, I'll probably have some comments or guidance on additional agenda items, but nothing in addition to what we discussed tonight, well, actually, I take that back. So we do have, um, if you recall, we have some sewer delinquencies, uh, that we were proceeding with.
Yeah.
Um, and we're at the stage where we're gonna proceed with, uh, share of sale, um, so here, I do have some, um, the pleadings and the, in the, in the filing fees associated with it, is there? Um, and I don't think I need a motion, I think we've already done it, but it is still the consensus of the board to proceed with this.
Yes, we had delayed it for a bit because we saw that most of those properties were up for tax upset sale, and that would have resolved the issue without us doing anything. But that did not resolve the issue, that was on September eighth. So now we're back to where we, uh, were before, and we would like you to please, um, process those. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, that brings us to the engineer's report.
Yes, so the first item under my report for this evening is just an update on within the lakes, uh, the bridge, uh, along Clubhouse Drive. Uh, we had a meeting yesterday morning, Michelle and I, with, uh, Mike Vasta and several other members of the property owners association board. They were providing the town with an update on where they currently stand. As of this time, uh, they have completed their survey and sign phase of the work. They are expecting, uh, sandblasting and painting on the bridge to start next week. And that's expected to be done by the end of September or early in October. The bridge during this part of, uh, the piece of work will remain open during the day and night. Um, it's after that work is complete that they're gonna transition into the replacement or repair of beams, bearings, and grates on the bridge. Uh, that's their, the following step. They're expecting that to go from basically when they finish the sandblasting and painting until end of October, early November, that's the schedule they have at this time, and plan to follow up with the more detailed construction schedules that the township has that information. Uh, it's when they get into this phase of work that, uh, the bridge will be closed uh, overnight those evenings. Um, and there will be occasional times as well during the day where they might have to close for a few hours just to, uh, you know, put jacks in place and adjust the bridges necessary during the daylight. They are, they're setting up a communication, uh, system, it'll case that notification system for residents, emergency personnel in township to keep them informed ahead of time when all these closures are to occur. And I will be, uh, putting, uh, Mike Vasta and Crosser in connection with one another, so there's a direct line of communication there, so, um, so hopefully, uh, we can avoid any impacts to their access to it from the plant, again, the fact that the, uh, this will be, uh, open uh, during the day, but it really shouldn't interfere with Crosser's ability to access the plant up there. Uh, I did ask about, um, status of Johnny's driveway, which has been made available for emergency access in the evening time. Um, that, uh, they weren't sure if that applied as well uh, to the township, so, uh, and they encouraged us to just reach out to Johnny's. My thought would be if someone, I don't know who's reached out to him most recently, but someone with passion could reach out, if we did have any success, we could then go back through, we don't know lakes, to see if they could staff, help us establish contact with them and get, get an answer on that. Again, I, in theory, it really shouldn't have to be used at all because, again, any of the sledge hauling, it's, again, as long as it's kept to the smaller trucks can still go over the bridge during construction, and it's for a relatively short period of time, a couple of months. Uh, but I, I think that's something that should be done, so. Uh, let's see here, um, additional updates on this, uh, it does seem like, um, uh, they have a pretty good system in place on top of this, communicating with homeowners. Um, they've also, you know, we had asked the question about, you know, what is of residents that might work night shifts, um, have to get in and out, those hours, and they, instead of, they're actually working with, uh, uh, local lodging or, and darkness places to try and set up, um, you know, uh, places for people to stay that, that are working those types of hours and jobs. Uh, so there, it does seem like they're trying to cover all their bases and take care of the residents up there. Um, and it's good to see that, uh, see that this should be complete in the next couple of months.
Did we mention that you folks had a meeting on September ten, right?
Yes, yes, I was yesterday worship that they came in.
So that was the engineer, Michelle representing the township, and who, and who from the HOA was there?
Uh, yes, it was, uh, I'm a bad, the.
Oh, there he is, wait, excuse me, yeah, so it was you, yourself, attorney Greg Malaska, William Lindabend, Lindaberry, Michelle Agnosdini, Alex Castellano, and Rosette Castellano. That's his name.
Yes. Yes, and.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was a, it was a productive meeting. Helped fill in some of the gaps again. Gave it a bit more clarity on what caused this to have more urgency, the, the fact that uh, it sounded like there was a homeowner that had a decent amount of fill brought into their property over a couple of months period where there were several larger trucks going in over that bridge repeatedly, that caused reactive deterioration of its condition. So, um, they're doing their best to respond quickly to address that.
So they have been in touch with the emergency services?
That's what they indicated, yeah, I'm planning to see when, I wanna reach out to them and get them in contact with Crosser, um, that I think could find worthwhile for us just to make sure the entire view for that, you know, all contacts that require notification if they're on their list, be contacted routinely as, uh, updates occur. Michelle, was there anything else, uh, to add to that, or?
No, I don't think so, I think that was it. Okay.
Alright, is there something else on that matter?
Alright.
Good?
Yeah, good to go, now we're up to the utility relocation.
Yeah, so, since our last meeting, I did have some correspondence with David Rader from PennDOT. If you recall, where we left off, there was a request to get a not-to-exceed clause added to the agreement, just to protect the township in case um, the bid when they get to construction were to come in, uh, well above the estimated amount for the work, which we had at roughly a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the sewer layer work, of which the township would be responsible for twenty five percent of that. Uh, because as David Rader had indicated before, the township's given the ability to concur or not concur with the bid amount. Uh, he responded on, you know, September third, basically indicating that the agreement cannot change regarding, uh, regarding instance, that's not something that Harrisburg is able to adjust for these types of agreements. Um, and that, uh, that's part of the, the justification for the seventy five percent reimbursement, uh, that gets factored in, uh, is to cover the cash up in case, uh, those costs were to increase considerably. He did say, and I followed up with a call to him, uh, just asking how many times they've gone through this, or what has typically happened, uh, when uh, a municipality or a utility provider were to dispute the, the bid amount. He said in his experience, I think he's been there for a while, that it's only occurred on one occasion, and that was with Med Ed on project where it sounded like there was a misunderstanding on the bid specs, and so the, the scope had to, um, get clarified for the contractor, alleviated the issue, so they said it doesn't really happen that often. Uh, and again, if the township were to not concur with it, then the onus would be on the municipality to go out in public business and would be responsible for a hundred percent of the cost, so. Uh, my recommendation would be to proceed with adopting the resolution as they provided with the updated mailing address for the township. Um, because, uh, again, you know, if, if, if the bid amount were to come in, it would have to come in substantially above that to make it work well for you to go out and bid on your own, so. Uh, yes, there is a little bit of, uh, ambiguity on what the ultimate price is gonna be for this project. Unfortunately, we can't get that narrowed down more at this time, uh, but I think this is the best uh, we can get on the agreement at this time. Any questions on that?
No, Pat's happy with it. Well, with it. Okay. And then we have utility relocation. The district, okay.
I don't think we have a copy of the package for signing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was in, it was in a prior.
We, we talked about it.
But I.
Later.
What was that, Michelle?
I, why am I?
The Penn.
Again, the only, the only change that they made was, uh, the first gauge on, and that, I think, it made a reference to Twenty Five Municipal Drive previously, so I had them revise that.
Yeah, there's one forty seven Municipal Drive. So. We're gonna look through this, and then.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think.
And there is a timeframe.
It's like October, September, or one third, it was one of those two dates.
So the board is, uh, satisfied, a, a, a motion or a motion to authorize the execution of the document or the agreement once this is determined to be a final form will be appropriate.
Okay, so.
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Alright, so now that brings us to old business, and we have two pieces under uh, old business for the revitalized two oh nine grant. We introduced these two at the last meeting, these two projects at the last meeting, just to announce that we received these. announce that we received these applications. There's been appropriate review of the applications, so for the first one, here, I'm just gonna share a screen for a second, just to practice all of it. So this is five oh two seven Milford Road. So. There we go, so if we come down Milford Road, you'll see this house, this structure over to the left. And what we have before us is an application for siding. So the motion would be for the board to preliminarily approve up to fifty percent of the cost of the siding on the sides of the house that can be visible from two oh nine, which logically would be three sides. So that's the motion.
Sir.
Any comments or questions?
Is there a max?
Well, the project can't be any more than twenty thousand dollars. It came in, if I remember, is there an application, James is on here too, he might have it.
Yeah, my understanding is the low proposal was seventeen thousand five hundred.
Five hundred, here it is, so it would be half of that.
No, it would be up to fifty percent of the cost associated with the three sides.
Seventy five percent. Right, or it's a ready, right, because there's four sides.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's been a motion and a second, any other comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Okay, so then, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
So then the second one was the revitalized grant application for the Middle Smithfield Presbyterian Church. And regretfully, they are not eligible because the project was done before the board had the chance to approve it. So that takes care of that. So moving on, that brings us to new business. And we have the municipal, the minimum municipal obligation for twenty twenty six on our pension plan, the township has a pension plan and contributes six percent of the employees' wages towards the pension plan. So the motion would be to accept the minimum municipal obligation, which comes to a hundred and, as since the twenty twenty six payroll is one million, eight hundred and forty six thousand, four hundred and forty seven dollars, the obligation would be six percent of that plus the fee of a thousand sixty dollars for fifty three members. So the motion would be for the minimum municipal obligation of a hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and forty seven dollars.
Sir.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, and now we're up to the new EMS coverage area. And I will locate that tab and share screen for that. If nothing else, it is motivation to not have so many windows open all the time. It didn't, didn't quite work, hold on a second. There we go. So that's it. Is that right?
It runs right along Fruchie, right?
Yes.
But it's both sides of Fruchie. No?
Just the, just the north side of Fruchie.
Just the north.
Because the, the development is on the other side, so rather than cut the development out, it would just, you know, that way you don't have to say, say house one or house twenty two. It's just all those in the, the.
Questions?
Bless you.
I'm not following. Pyramid is on the right side. Of Fruchie, I think.
Right, I'll think. Up here, but when we get to the development down here, we weren't cutting the development.
And you are pointing to this right here, right?
Yeah, this right from here. I saw a map where it kind of came through here, like this, where the township line was. But when we get down here, it's just right along here, but up in here, this is correct. Where here maybe.
Control center took out the condos
Yeah.
that come off on Hollow Road because those driveways come out into Smithfield Township, so that was this, okay?
That's what I was talking about.
You know, here, right, like right in here. So this second area due for Lehman Pike is both sides of Fruchie, but not over here, but this is party's loop, it doesn't include this, right, okay? So here's Fruchie, so both sides up until you get to like the Smithfield line, so this is not included, that's right.
Correct, Debbie?
Okay.
Correct, because they enter on Hollow Road.
Correct.
So on the one side, yeah, right, only the places that come on Fruchie, that enter on Fruchie.
It looks like it's half the ski area.
Well, it's the part of the ski area that they pick people up in. It's a, that, this half includes the, the first aid.
Okay.
So that's the ski patrol, that's where everything goes.
This is more parking over.
Yeah, that's all the parking and stuff.
This is the part that they took out.
Right.
Okay.
It just didn't make sense if their driveways come out over there, why you have to go around.
The only thing, they cut the line.
They've been doing it.
Yeah.
They do it, we do it ourselves for our own people, they know where they're supposed to go.
It's not me driving.
Not you driving.
No, I'm. Okay, you're in the, cannot even in the township.
Well, it's when you get a paper route, that's when the challenge.
So. I'm in, like to make a motion to change the lines for Bushville.
For the second.
For Lehman, for the second due.
Because Lehman sent a letter that, and they are amendable, yeah. So your motion, I'm, I'm seconding and saying Lehman sent a letter, Lehman Township sent a.
Second due when we're not available.
Based on the map created by Monroe County Control Center on September eleven, twenty twenty five, new EMS coverage area in station order.
And it goes into effect when, as of?
Um, maybe, maybe October fifteenth, they will let me know.
Okay.
Because their CAD system, they're working on all of it.
Wasn't working very well to look at the system, but that's.
Okay, so a motion, a second, any other comments or questions, including anyone that is on Zoom? All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Okay, Pat, did you want to take that bid home, the truck bid?
No, I think I can leave it, two things. One, we'll need, we'll need to clarify and confirm that it was intended for Middle Smithfield Township and not Smithfield. And two, I would have, I'm assuming someone from the DPW department put together the bid, the description and the specifics, to look through and compare and ensure that it is responsive in, in what we're looking for.
Okay.
I mean, I did, there's a couple of things that is probably better for them to take a close look at and make sure.
Okay, and I mean, I, my understanding is the purpose of this is to have a larger vehicle, so there's not as many trips to go pick up the, the blacktop. I, I would say though, I mean, it's never a bad thing to have information in the file, I would say that perhaps next time, just call around and get quotes from companies that will, they, they will go and pick up your laptop for you and deliver it on site. It, it takes a little bit of canoodling because the timing has to work out. From what I understand with Pendott this year, because Pendott used all the material, nobody could get at it until later in the day and by that time, you know, they were gone, but you know, I don't know if this is going to be fitted for a plow to be able to use it for that, but our salt is delivered. You know, how, how much do we, what would we use this for to deliver stone? So it's never a bad idea to just collect quotes, so you could say, well, we purchased this because doing it this other way was not as cost effective as a purchase. So, anyway, so that said, sorry, I, we didn't make our half hour.
So what else can you leave in this panel?
I would, so you've accepted it, I would hold off on recording it until those two things are confirmed. One, confirm that it's intended for Middle Smithfield. And two, whoever put this together from DPW, review it and ensure that it's consistent with what they're looking for.
Is what they want.
And what's described in the bid. Right?
Okay.
And then, assuming that's the case, it'll probably be on the next agenda formally.
Right.
Authorized when it's forward. They have, I looked and they're, they're required to keep it open for a period of forty five days. So you're, you mean two weeks.
Okay. That said, moving on to public comment, is there any public comment from anyone here in person or on Zoom? Anyone? Motion to adjourn?
Sir.
Comments or questions, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.